Two seconds.
I'm done.
That's how we get records.
Hello and welcome, everybody. I am calling the Monday, July 22nd, 2024 Planning Commission Meeting to Order here at 6:30 PM. Tonight's Planning Commission meeting will be held in person and also virtually on Zoom. And as Chair, I'll be leading the meeting. The public will be welcome to participate when they're invited. And your participation can be in person or online via Zoom. If you're on Zoom and experience audio problems, please leave the meeting and rejoin. And this additional instructions on how to participate are posted online at the city's website, www.burnsville.gov, and that's in the Public Meeting Calendar section. As usual, tonight's meeting is also available for viewing on BCTV and on the city's website. If you're unable to participate this evening and you would like to submit public testimony, I encourage you to email your comments to city staff or mail your comments directly to City Hall. Our Zoom instructions for joining us online tonight are zoom.online, zoom.us/join. Our meeting ID is 834-9317-4979. Once you're logged into the meeting, please use the chat feature to tell the moderator which item you want to speak to. You may also call into the meeting. Do we still use the meeting phone call? Calling in is still, okay. You may also call into the meeting at 651-372-8299. It's the same meeting ID as the Zoom meeting, 834-9317-4979. For each public hearing that we hold, we'll open up a time when callers may speak to that item, and it will give you more instructions at that time. Until then, your call will be muted. So our first agenda item would be the election of Chair and Vice Chair for the Commission for the next year. Are there any nominations for the election of Chair? Commissioner John?
I think that Chair Wad has not had enough time as the Chair. He had a lot of cancellations of meetings. If he would be so willing, I would like to nominate Ali Wad, Al Wad, sorry, as our Chair.
And I'll second that.
Thank you. A motion is seconded. I'd be honored to continue. On that note, we'll take a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The motion carries. Thank you, everybody. This has been very fun. So we're going to repeat this process for the Vice Chair. Are there any nominations for Vice Chair? Commissioner Timmerman, I would like to nominate our current Vice Chair, Karen Braddock. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion is seconded. I should maybe ask, are you up for this again?
You know what? I think I am.
Okay. On that note, we'll take-
It's a tough year, wasn't it?
It's a tough one.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Congratulations, Vice Chair Braddock.
Thank you very much.
Yes. Next item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Are there any changes from Commissioners? Any changes to the agenda from staff?
No changes.
On that note, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda. Motion?
Motion to adopt.
And seconded, thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number three, approval of minutes from our July 8, 2024, meeting. Any changes to the minutes from Commissioners? Any changes to the minutes from staff?
No changes.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Motion?
Seconded.
And seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Our next, our next item is a public hearing. This is the application of Paul Souza for a variance to allow a 20-foot front yard setback versus the 30-foot requirement and a preliminary and final plat of a one-lot residential subdivision to be known as Souza Edition located at 14910 Oakwood Drive. So Ms. Garros, do you have a presentation or?
Yes, just a short.
Okay.
The application before you is a public hearing. We have worked with the applicant, and the subject site is backs onto a wetland, which is also a fen and also part of the Federal Emergency Management Agency floodplain. So there are some final items that staff is working out with the applicant. So our request for the Planning Commission tonight is to open the public hearing and then to continue it to the August 12, 2024, meeting, which is your next meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I will open the public hearing for this. Any questions before I open the public hearing? Okay. We'll open the public hearing for this item at 6:36 PM. And then I will entertain a motion to continue the hearing to our next meeting. So moved by Commissioner John, seconded by everyone else. All those in favor of continuing this motion, continuing this hearing into our next meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number five on our agenda, this is a public hearing, application of 1705 LLC for a rezoning from B3 general business to B3 planned unit development. Concept and development stage PUD to expand the North Imports' open sales rental lot south and east of 1705 Highway 13 East. Presenting Deborah Garros, City Planner.
Thank you, Commissioners. For the application this evening, the subject site actually consists of three different properties. On the left-hand side of the screen, you'll see North Imports is located at 1705 Highway 13, and that lot has a B3 general business zoning, but is not part of a planned unit development. The property just to the east and south is a second lot that has recently been purchased by the property owner for North Imports, and that has a B3 PUD designation from 1978 or 1979 planned unit development. So there is also a second piece which has been added on to 1705. That site, that is the north, it's about a 30-foot wide, 4,500-square-foot piece of property that was until the last year or so owned by a different entity. There was a billboard that was on the property, so that was the principal use of the site. The billboard was taken down, and then the site was subsequently sold to the property owner for North Imports, which is Alex Doroshenko is the owner of that property. So that parcel has been combined with the parcel that has the dealership building on it, which is just to the south. And you can see it on the aerial photo on the right-hand side. This was the piece that used to have the billboard in this location. One thing I just want to draw your attention to is there is an access, and there is a cement apron here at this location. And the site for North Imports is this piece of property. And a few years ago, they did receive a conditional use permit for an auto sailors, excuse me, auto sale, sales lot. And they also platted that part of the property. So this is part of, they call Lot 1, Block 1 of Doroshenko Edition. Then this piece, they recently purchased, and so the entire subject site consists of about 1.9 acres. The item, the first item is to consider rezoning. The subject site, this exception piece shown here is the Doroshenko Edition. So they're looking at rezoning that from B3 general business to B3 planned unit development. So that is what the rezoning is for. The next part of the application is then to have concept and development stage planned unit development over the entire property. And then that would be to allow for basically the expansion of the parking lot for the auto sales business. As far as existing conditions on the property, there is an existing building and some area that is proposed to be patched. And basically, they're looking to expand pretty much over to the east and to the south on the property. And again, on the existing conditions here up at the north, the northeast, northwest, sorry, northwest corner is that, is that Egress parking area. The thing to call attention to before we get into things is that Lot 2 is not developed and hasn't been. And the primary reason is because of all the encumbrances over the property makes it really difficult to develop a building. And there's also a wetland, and a part of that wetland also encroaches onto this vacant lot. So basically, due to the utilities, the various easements, it's really difficult. And this is a large storm sewer pipe, I believe 42-inch, so it's a major pipe, if you will. And then, just to show, there are extensive drainage and utility easements on the property, and here is in yellow to show where all of those are. Primarily, those are focused on, again, the existing utilities. So as far as the site plan, the applicant is proposing to basically expand their parking lot all the way to the northeast and then also almost to the south lot line. There is an existing part of the property owner to the south. They're, they have a drive aisle or part of their parking lot that encroaches over that common lot line. So the proposal will get rid of that encroachment, if you will. And they are showing, and we'll discuss this further, but they're basically showing a resolution for that, so there won't be an encroachment on that any longer. And the other major part of the project is that they're putting in a stormwater pond on the northeast corner, which will help to improve stormwater management. Right now, the majority of the site kind of just sheet drains into the wetland, or if it can make it to the existing storm sewer, you know, catch basins, it enters into that. So as far as the planned unit development, there are several benefits to the project site. It allows for expansion of a local business. It allows for development of that odd-shaped Lot 2 next door. They are putting in a biofiltration or stormwater pond, which will treat the majority of stormwater to the site. There is an overflow that will be constructed, so at times there may be overflow from that pond into the wetland, but it will have already, should have already been cleaned through the filtration process. They'll resolve that existing parking lot encroachment to the south. They'll get rid of that existing driveway north of their site. And access spacing actually will be increased between Highway 13 and the first driveway access to the site from 53 feet to 123 feet. So that is definitely considered a benefit. They're providing more overall green space than the ordinance minimum, 34% versus 25%. And their building perimeter landscaping also exceeds the standard. They're providing 34% as opposed to the 30% standard. With the planned unit development, there are also some deviations that are requested. They are requesting zero lot line setbacks, and that's to allow the parking lot to extend over those common lot lines to the east and south. That is something that's allowed by the ordinance, either with a conditional use permit or in this case, planned unit development. So staff is supportive of that. The second one is to allow parking lot without a principal building. Again, this lot won't have a principal building, but it's going to be associated with the other property. And off-site parking is actually allowed in B3 zoning districts or by planned unit development. So staff is supportive of that. There, the other three deviations relate to parking lot screening standards, and this will be primarily along the Highway 13 frontage. They're requesting just to put in trees and not have any lower landscape screening, and that does require a deviation. They are also requesting that the parking islands that they will be installing just be cement islands as opposed to landscape parking islands. That does not meet the minimum standards of the ordinance. And the last one is a deviation to allow them to develop the site without underground irrigation. Again, that is a minimum requirement, so staff is not supportive of the landscaping deviations, landscaping, and irrigation. As far as the site area information, they are meeting or exceeding ordinance standards in green space requirements. They do meet the 8% internal landscape requirement with their plan that they have identified. And for parking, they're really increasing the number of parking stalls by 100, or excuse me, there'll be a total of 136 stalls, so much above the 25 stalls that are existing. As far as the removals plan, this again, just showing the removal of this existing kind of parking apron. One of the conditions staff is recommending is that there is an access easement to this part of the site, and we're requesting that that be abandoned as well, so that we can get rid of excess that's too close to Highway 13. So the main driveway will be existing, and basically, they're just going to refurbish the existing hard surface on the lot, and then they'll be expanding over these common lot lines for the rest of the parking lot. They'll be taking out this overhead power line. It's just a small line, but that power line and poles, they'll be removing as well. And the grading plan is fairly straightforward. There's not a lot of change in elevation to the site, with the exception of when you get over to the northeast and east part of the property that has a sloping hill down to the wetland. So in this, they're showing, this is the new stormwater pond and the wetland, and basically just expanding the parking lot. There is information in the packet. This is just detail of kind of that stormwater basin that they'll be installing, and there is more information if Planning Commission should have any questions. In terms of the site landscaping, again, one of the conditions is that this site is across the highway from residential townhomes, and for parking lots that are larger than, I believe, 25 spaces, which this will be, they're required to provide screening along the north side. They are providing their screening along 121st Street for the parking area, and the staff is recommending a condition that that also be extended along the north side to, again, meet the requirements of the ordinance. The recommendation from staff is we're recommending approval of the application subject to a number of conditions. Because the application has, part of the site has an old PUD on it, that PUD is no longer needed. It's something that relates to seven lots within the, within the Happy Commercial Park, and so we're looking to rescind that. So the first condition is basically to allow for the rezoning and then repeal that old PUD. And then number two, conditions of previously approved CUPs will remain in force and effect, and that's primarily the open sales lot for the Doroshenko Edition, where the dealership is located. Uses listed in the underlying zoning district will be allowed as, if they are permitted or can, permitted or accessory uses, allowed in the B3 zoning district. Uses, oh, I did that. We are also indicating on the fourth condition, in order to have an open sales rental lot, you're subject to specific conditions in addition to the general conditions, and those are outlined in Section 10746. And we are requesting a condition be included, that they will be subject to all of those with the exception of any specific PUD deviations that are granted. The existing access agreements over the area to the north, that those be removed. They will need a tree removal permit. They are removing more than 60% of the trees onsite, so they do need to pay a woodland replacement fee, and that's about $12,200. Tree preservation security and the amount of $6,500, basically, dollars is required, and that's to protect existing trees or trees that they're proposing to keep. That's what that is for. Standard condition for tree contacters license being required. And then item 10, that the landscape plan is revised as recommended by staff to provide the required screening along that north side of the parking lot, landscape planter islands, and underground irrigation as the minimum requirements of the ordinance are. 11, there are some outstanding comments from Bolton and Mink, who represents our city engineer. So they're requesting the satisfaction of those few outstanding conditions. And also, the applicant will need to enter into a stormwater maintenance agreement, and that will need to be filed with the county. And with that, I can stand for questions.
Thank you for your presentation. Are there any questions from Commissioners? Commissioner Anderson?
That north side screening, is it required both to have the lower-level plants as well as the trees, or could they just do the lower-level plants?
They could just do the lower-level plants, and they don't have to provide the trees there. With the landscape islands, there is a requirement that they contain at least one tree, so that they could use some of the trees that are shown on this landscape plan and then just move them to the planter islands. They could either or, or both.
Commissioner Hamilton?
With the addition of paved space going to the east-
Yes.
And concerned it lines up with a wetland, is there, and it's all paved, is there adequate drainage to protect that wetland area?
Yes. Actually, it, site drainage will be improved over the current condition, and by providing that stormwater pond, they're actually meeting the requirements and will improve the situation overall.
Proceed.
There is an addition, there's another building to the south.
Yes.
Do they own that building? Because I know there are parking cars there.
They do not own that building. They may be looking at purchasing this at some point in the future, but currently, they do not own that.
And I can't remember, is there access from this current plan into the, into that adjoining lot, or is it?
They are basically proposing to remove the encroachment here. They're proposing basically a gutter to cross there, so you could technically drive from one to the other.
Okay.
And it's, there's existing pavement there now, and they, they are proposing to put in the curb, you know, to meet that. So the, at least it will not be improvements from the south encroaching over the common lot line. But there will still be an opening there.
Commissioner John?
Thank you, Chair. So did they give a reason why they were not planning to do the islands or put landscape islands or across the north side?
Primarily the cost associated with that. It's common for the auto dealerships not to want to do that. We have required that to be done. The exception for screening for the dealerships along Buck Hill Road, there is a power, or excuse me, an underground gas line that's located there and easement. So the gas line, the gas company has not wanted to have things planted within that. They'll accept grass, but don't want to have trees and shrubs. So in those, in that case, we have allowed a deviation from that standard.
So I suppose they're making the argument they want the cars on display on Highway 13, but-
Don't want anything to block, block the vehicles or need to clean up leaves and those types of things.
Commissioner Anderson's low-level plant idea probably would be best for them, yeah?
Yes. Yep, along the front, yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
The, the parking islands have to be larger in order to accept landscaping? Is that correct?
They, the parking islands, I believe, as shown, do meet the size-
Okay.
-standard. They need to be at least nine feet and have enough area to provide for planting, but I do believe they meet the ordinance standards for the size that's shown. They just don't have the plantings.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from Commissioners? Commissioner Anderson?
There seems not to be very much grass in this area. You've got the stormwater pond, you've got the parking lot. Is there a reason that you would allow them to not have the irrigation?
If the Planning Commission, if you want to do that, you can. From a staff perspective, we would say no, because it's a minimum requirement of the ordinance to have it, have the irrigation. All the dealerships that we have dealt with have installed the irrigation, with the exception of if they were, we have a couple of dealerships, Burnsville Hyundai, for example, where they weren't going to be doing any changes to part of their storage area. So we did allow a PUD deviation for those, so they wouldn't need to reconstruct those on the existing, they wouldn't need to rip up that part of the pavement. But everything that was new did need to meet the requirements, and they did provide the underground irrigation landscaping, those islands.
Seeing no further questions, we'll move this to the public hearing section of the meeting at 6:56. And if anybody wishes to speak to this item, there's nobody in the council chambers with us. Is there anybody that wants to speak to this?
Nobody online.
Nobody is online either. So with that, we will close the public hearing at 6:57, and I will move this to discussion or a motion. Commissioner John?
Yeah, I think this looks pretty straightforward. I agree that they should meet the minimum requirements, as Ms. Garros was specifying. Irrigation system, I think, is important, too. Unless anyone else has anything to say, I can make a recommendation. Okay, with that, I would, I would recommend that we recommend to the City Council to approve and rezone Lot 1, Block 1, Doroshenko Edition from B3 to B3 PUD in concept stage and development stage PUD to expand the North Imports' open sales rental lot, use south and east of 1705 Highway 13 East, subject to the 12 conditions listed below.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All, we'll call this to, call this to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Garros. That was item number five. Item number six on our agenda is updates. Are there any updates from Commissioners? Commissioner John?
I basically, not an update, but a question. So I know in the last city, I think it was the work session, Deputy City Manager Thompson talked about how our zoning requirements are, seem to be outdated, and I was wondering if we would have a way of understanding what he meant by that. Am I putting you on the spot?
You're putting me on the spot.
No, you did.
Good evening, Commissioners. Yeah, new guy. Well, that is one of our work items that we have for next year. It's one of my primary tasks, being a new playing manager, is the update of the zoning code. There's a lot of work that's been done on it previously, but the goal for next year is to bring it across the finish line. So I hope that answers your question, because at that conversation, at that meeting.
Okay. Is it mainly, is it, are we overcomplicated, oversimplified?
I think basically what the intent of the whole city code update was is to bring things to be current and- things to be current and consistent throughout. The zoning ordinance especially, because there are so many changes to it all the time and that have occurred over the years. This is really to take a comprehensive look at it and bring it up to speed and try to, some of the things are kind of antiquated, like we have these long, long lists of uses that are permitted, for example. A lot of them are really the same thing, so can we just consolidate that and make it, you know, a little bit easier to read, easier to understand for the public, and try to update the things that I think Planning Commission and Council have talked about over the past couple of years.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you.
Both of you.
Any updates from City staff?
Yes, I can do a little update here. At the July 16 City Council meeting, the Council did approve two applications that are in front of the Planning Commission previously. They approved the preliminary and final plat for Roar's Heart of the City, which is 100, and it's really raining, which is located at 175 Burnsville Parkway. The project consisted of four stories, 170 units. It is 60% AMI, affordable project. So that project is in for billing permit review right now. They're hoping to go vertical in October on that site. And the other item that was approved by the City Council is a conditional use permit for an open storage lot at 1200 Highway 13 West. The other item I'd like to mention quickly is that the next City Council meeting is on the 5th, due to night to night on the 6th, so they swapped the dates, so everyone can attend the events on night to night. And our next meeting is on Monday, August 12th. That's all I got.
Thank you. Our last item is adjournment. Is there a motion?
We'll just stay here. It's fine. Sounds like it's raining.
I will-
We should stick around for a while.
Exactly. What else can we cover?
Move to adjourn.
Thank you. A second?
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.